All right, we are going to call this meeting to order at 8:15. Apologize for the delay. If you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into his love, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in the event of an emergency, please exit through the doors located on the north side of the gym. Turn left, proceed directly to the outside, or you may use the door located in the northwest corner and proceed directly outside of the district office. Okay. I want to welcome you all this evening. I know you're all here to hear us do our business. This is great turnout for that. We usually get turnouts like that, so this is good. And we get elected officials to come watch us do our business. This is great. Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on March 14th, 2018 as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dereska. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's report for the month of February 2018 as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dereska. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Cami.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How is the lack of energy? It sounds like it's after a vacation. So, we're here tonight to celebrate our girls' basketball team. Those of us who have been around with the girls for a while really know what it's taken to get to this point and are really proud of the girls, not only for their athletic ability, but because of their heart and their spirit and their academics and who they are as people. So nights like tonight are really just a joy for us. Not only do we get to celebrate the girls who are on a basketball team, but we get to celebrate their coaches as well, because we all know it takes a village. And the dedication on the part of our coaches and our girls is really nothing short of just kind of miraculous. I mean, everybody talked about just how it all came together. And so my understanding is that there was a challenge put out there to play a college basketball team. So we're waiting for that to... And the most amazing thing is that after it was all over, you know, on professional athletics, when the game's over and they've won and they say to the coach, "So Coach Catapano, now that you've won the Federation champs, what's next?" And he says...
Disney.
Because he actually did go to Disney. It was such an opportunity, but he just is so shy. He wants to take advantage of that. We are making this commercial, Mr. Catapano, whether you like it or not. Anyway, so tonight, we're here to celebrate. I want to thank all of our elected officials who have come to celebrate with us. So I want to thank Senator Kaminsky. I want to thank Assemblyman Brian Curran. I want to thank Town of Hempstead, Laura Gillan. I'd like to thank Congresswoman Guzbi and Congressman Esposito for coming tonight. It is really our joy to share our girls with you, and so we know that you guys are busy and we appreciate you coming to share in this event. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Ramirez to come on up and say a few words. And while he's coming up, let me also praise Mr. Ramirez. Being an athletic director is honestly, we were just talking about this, one of the hardest jobs in the district. It takes a lot, and you know that you're doing it well when the person who's doing it does not sweat a bit.
I don't know about that.
And he's smiling.
Thank you. I love what I do, so it's fun.
That's great.
I'm just going to, can we call the coaches up now and then?
Absolutely.
Varsity head coach, Mr. Tom Catapano. Assistant varsity coach, Mr. Anthony Bolden. Program coaches, Mr. Mike Butler, Mr. Chris Soupios, and Ms. Amber Harrison. Usually I don't speak at these things because I know people don't come here to hear me talk, but it's been a little bit of a different year, so...
So we're going to make a really...
We're going to do that. It's been a little bit of a different year, so I just want to say a couple of things and some thank yous. I want to start by giving my sincere thanks to everyone involved in supporting these young women and the coaching staff, the Board of Education, Dr. Cami, the District Office Administration, staff, parents, and community. Thank you to all our guests here tonight who took time to come out and celebrate these young ladies and their accomplishments. The amount of emails, calls, gestures this season to support the team was incredible. Seeing Board of Education members throughout the playoffs at the games, traveling as far as Glen Falls, that was a tremendous experience. Our superintendent, who took time to set up a police escort when they got back from the Federation, and then met the bus at 3:00 a.m. and greeted every young lady as she got off the bus. That doesn't happen everywhere. Those things that we see here, that's a special community and that's what Baldwin is. So I wanted to acknowledge that. To our parents, I'm going to use my gym voice a little bit, but to our parents, what can I say about our parents? They're loud. They're proud, and they're loud. An amazing group of people who are never, ever scared to represent the team, but more importantly, represent the community with pride. They take a lot of pride in what this team stands for and what our community stands for. So I thank you guys for always being there for them and for the coaches. Just to share a quick memory to just show you the level of pride for some of these parents. He's not here tonight, so I'm a little upset because I wanted him to hear this. It's one of the things that stands out in my mind at the Federation tournament, after we won the big tournament, knocked down number one, Mr. Rodney Harrison. Kaia's dad, Kaia, just raise your hand. Kaia's dad ran around the gym yelling, "Public schools, public schools," at any Christ the King parent that he could find. I just wish I had video of it. So thank you to everyone involved in supporting these teams. To the girls, I thought really hard about what to say to you guys today, and I couldn't really come up with much. The only thing that kept coming in my head is the song that you played before every game and after every game, Dreams and Nightmares? Yeah. And I think the song starts off with, "Ain't this what you've been waiting for?" So this journey, this nine-year journey is what everybody's been waiting for. The song goes on to talk about, you know, you pray for times like this, you grind like that so you can shine like this, and that's what you guys did this year, you shined. It's a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. We're very proud of you. Your journey has been a long one, the hours in the gym, the heartbreaking losses along the way, and the challenges. I don't want to bring up Comac, but those were learning bumps. Those are the things that made you who you are in the end. Through it all, you persevered, you stayed focused, you continued to work, and in the end, when the opportunity met hard work, a Federation championship was won. If you learned anything from your experience here, if you take anything away with you today from this season, remember the words that Coach Catapano spoke before the finals against Christ the King. The journey, the nine-year journey this season was all about life lessons. Go take what's yours. If you want something and you're willing to work for it, go get it. Don't back down from anyone. Don't let anyone, any situation make you think for one second that you don't deserve to be number one, that you're not the best, that any challenge is bigger than you or any situation is bigger than what you can rise to. And lastly, the grind and the work. Remember that you succeeded because you were willing to work, and the success that you will have in the future will be dependent on the work that you put in. Those are life lessons, and that's what I take a lot of pride in, is that the coaches and the program has instilled those in you. We are extremely proud of you, your accomplishment, more importantly, the legacy that you are leaving behind in the community. So thank you for everything you've accomplished. And lastly, just to talk, I usually embarrass Coach Catapano. He made me promise I wouldn't today, so I'm actually going to be a little serious for one minute. It's hard for me to do this with him, but I am. I want to thank our coaching staff, everyone up here. We're extremely fortunate to have the staff that we have here, not only as a school, but as a community. The sacrifices that they make for the students, for the programs, for the community, no one will ever understand the amount of time and effort that it took to get the program to the level and to get them to where they are. The impact is so much more than the success, the impact that they're having and continue to have on these young ladies. The life lessons, as we talked about, the opportunities that they're providing for these young ladies to continue their education at the next level. For those that don't know, we have six young ladies that are going to continue to play athletics at the college level and have amassed $1.2 million in scholarships. So I'll say it again, $1.2 million, and that comes through work on their part, support from the coaches, and work on the coaches' end. They are life changers, they've impacted lives, and they've impacted families in our community. The relationships that they've developed, and more importantly, the culture of family that the team has, that comes from them. It's all been created through their work and their care. I know that, well, I shouldn't, you should know that everything you've done is greatly appreciated by everyone here tonight in the community, and I just wanted to take a minute and say thank you. All right? And now, without further ado, I don't have any music to introduce them. I'm just going to hand them the mic, Mr. Catapano.
That's a first. I just want to say thank you to the Board of Education, Dr. Cami, District Administration, Ms. LaFergoa, and the High School Administration, Mr. Moore, and the Middle School Administration, all the prestigious guests, dignitaries, the parents who, you know, we've grown with, a lot of friendships, the time that you've put into your child. You're very blessed to have parents like this. Not everybody has parents that will travel all over the country, that will sacrifice financially, time. They give you everything, so it starts at the home, and we definitely couldn't do this without your support. So thank you, parents. To the coaches, we got the best staff in the country right here. Chris Soupios, Amber Harrison, Mike Butler, and Anthony Bolden. I can write a book on what amazing people they are, but I'll just sum it up. The week of, after we beat Comac in the Long Island Championship, we could possibly play eight teams. Chris Soupios was in Westchester scouting for us. Amber and Mike Butler were in Troy scouting for us, and Anthony and I were in Rockchester. So we were all over the state of New York scouting all of our opponents, and they didn't, I knew I could make a call, and they would be more than happy to do it. So the sacrifices, and more importantly for me, the friendships that I've made over the course, I couldn't do this without that connection, so thank you guys so much. Our Athletic Director, Mr. Ramirez, in all seriousness, he's the best in the business. I cannot tell you how many other schools see him and say, "Man, that guy is everywhere." He literally is at everything, all year round. When these kids come up, I guarantee you, he's influenced every single one of them. He's helped them not only on the court, whether it be on the field, but more importantly, in the classroom. He sets up meetings, makes sure they're academically qualified. He helps them not just athletically, but socially, and he's a good friend. He is, he's the Athletic Director of the Year. I tell you that right now. There's nobody that works hard. And the sacrifice that he makes away from his family, that goes unnoticed, you know, for our kids. And he has children, and he misses their volleyball games and things like that to be here with us. So, Mr. Ramirez, thank you. Most importantly, though, the players, because without the players, none of this is happening. So congratulations to the players. I do just want to take five minutes, just talk about the journey quickly. This didn't happen by accident, I can tell you that. What you put in is what you get out, just like anything in life. These kids literally outworked everybody. We've had the blessing to have most of these kids since fourth and fifth grade, some of them actually third grade. So this is about as close as you can get to an extended family in a school district as you can find. This was a nine-year vision for them, and it finally came to fruition at the end. I got to tell maybe two stories. One, I'll never forget Jenna, Asia, and Kaia, our team made it upstate, we lost, unfortunately, and the three of them came with shirts, and they were like this big. And they said, "I'll see..." Bolden Lady Bruins, and on the back it said, "I'll see you in five years." And they walked around the whole stadium, "I'll see you in five years." And sure enough, they saw them in five years, and we got up there and eventually, I don't know if they were in a state championship, but they were in a Federation championship. So this was a journey, this was a vision. Some things, just to really point out how special they were, they're the only Long Island team to ever, ever win back-to-back New York State Championships. This year, we got up to the Federation. Last year, we lost there. We beat Long Island Lutheran in the semifinal. We had to play the New York City Catholic school winners, Christ the King High School. They were tremendous, 6'5", 6'4", 6'2". Their point guard was six foot. They were the number-one ranked team in the country, 35-0. Nobody thought we were going to beat them, except right here. Except right here. Ready for this? There's four national polls, the four polls and the consensus. We finished number five in the country at the end of the year. We beat the number-one team in the country, and the guy, Bob Corwin, does the national rankings. He called me last week, he said, "Tom, I don't know if you know this, but you're the only public school in that ranking." And he said, "There's 18,000 girls' basketball teams in the United States, and they're number Anybody who's watched them play, and it's true, everybody here has been at games, the support, the love that we get, it's incredible. They're selfless. They like setting each other up more than scoring their own basket. It was amazing. As talented as they were, they loved making somebody else look good. They were defensive-minded. I mean, you can't help, we went upstate, and people said, "I've never seen a team defend like that." And, you know, in this day and age with ESPN and everybody talks about offense and, you know, this team defended. They got after people, and that's why they won. They were tougher, they were in better shape, and they did all the little things that maybe didn't show up on the box score, but eventually got them to a championship. And the sacrifice, I'll never forget this group for the sacrifice that they put in. When most high school kids are at the beach or on vacation, these kids are grinding in some gym in the middle of Tennessee or Georgia. So the people that really know, they know what these kids did. So proud of these six seniors. They're all going to amazing schools, College of New Rochelle, Malloy College, Eastern Michigan, Old Dominion, Temple University, and the University of Georgia. We talk about leaving their legacy. If you read Newsday this Sunday, they wrote a whole article, how this is the greatest team ever to ever come out of Long Island. So that's pretty special right there. And I can tell you, more importantly, these young ladies, they're built to do great things in their life. Hopefully, they've learned some life lessons. We always talk about that. Our job as high school coaches, really, honestly, is to teach you life lessons, and hopefully we did that along the way. These are the future leaders of the world. Couldn't be more proud. Here we go. Come on up, guys. Jenna Ann Akarico. Alexis Apanti. Ebony Duvert. Dana Elcock. Leila Elurs. Jasmine Green. Federation MVP, Kaia Harrison. New York State MVP, Asia Hudson. Shania Iglesias. Danette Johnson. Nicolette Manzella. Jamila Moore. Elena Randolph. Destiny Samuel. Jada Watts. Megan Esper. Callie Nunez. Courtney Sterling. Kiara Wilson.
Just hold, sit tight. Yep. Do we want to do the pictures, do we want to do the pictures first? After, okay. Sure. Okay.
Just saying, we're going to ask you to stay up there. There's an opportunity for pictures.
Mm-hmm. I know, but they're not listening, because they're focusing on taking pictures. Yeah, okay, yeah. If you guys could hang out there for a second, we're going to, I'm going to introduce some of our elected officials that are here. And before I do that, I just wanted to say on behalf of the board how proud we are of the accomplishments that you guys have made. I think some of us, we may have taken it for granted that you guys were going to go all the way, just watching you play during the year. It's been, it's been incredible. And sometimes, when you're in the midst of sort of history, you don't notice it, but I think we noticed it and we talked about it, watching your girls play. It was incredible, and I think we all knew up here, you guys were going to go all the way, so...
No doubt in my mind.
Yeah. So with that, I want to, I'm going to introduce first Senator Todd Kaminsky.
Ladies, it's very rare to be in the presence of champions. That's what you are. And following Mr. Ramirez, I really just hope you take the lessons that you learned this year about teamwork and sacrifice and just take it with you wherever you go. Certainly on a much different level, never won a championship, but I did have to travel away from college coming out of Long Beach High School, and it's intimidating being with whatever fancy private school kids and boarding school kids and different kids and saying, "Can I measure up?" The answer is, you're better than all of them. And as you go through life, just remember that hard work and being a good friend is more important than all of it, and I have no doubt you will continue to be champions throughout your whole life, and no matter what happens from this day forward, you are champions. So I have a proclamation I hope the school will display prominently that I will give to the team in a moment. And on behalf of the State Senate, there's a lot of great officials here who are going to speak, so I'll be very quick, but it says, "The Baldwin Bruins Girls Varsity Basketball Team defeated reigning Christ the King High School Basketball Team to win the 2008 Federation Finals. It's the belief of this body that when organizations of such noble aims and accomplishments are brought to our attention, we should publicly proclaim and commend them for the edification of others. Therefore, the State Senate recognizes that in the Baldwin Bruins Girls Varsity Basketball Team, we have an organization worthy of our highest respect and esteem." Congratulations.
Thank you, Senator Kaminsky. Senator Brooks was unable to join us this evening, but he did send log certificates for each of the girls. Next, I'm going to introduce Assemblyman Brian Curran.
Good evening, ladies, and I want to thank the Board for inviting me here tonight. Let me just first say, congratulations, but congratulations on winning the championship, but more importantly, congratulations on all the hard work and determination that you put into this year and how it resulted. I will tell you this, I have a daughter who's 16-years-old, and she plays for her high school, and she usually asks me at the beginning of the evening, she goes, "Where are you going tonight?" And I told her that I'm going to Baldwin to congratulate their basketball, girls' basketball team, because they've won the state championship. And she said, "Yeah." She said, "I've..." She played in the Freeport Summer League. She goes, "Those girls were good. They ran, they blew our doors off and ran us out of the gym." And now, I was talking to your coaches, and I just found out that that was just the JV team, so now I have to really break her heart and tell her that she's going to lose again next year. You know what? We have citations from the New York State Assembly for all of you, and we also have a big proclamation that was supposed to come down today, but didn't get here, but I will get it to the superintendent. But I did want to do something special for you, so instead of just a proclamation, I wanted to make sure, and I wanted to give it to you. It's a basketball that reads, "Congratulations to the Baldwin Lady Bruins Basketball New York State Federation Championship 2018, Assemblyman Brian Curran, 21st Assembly District." Thank you very much.
All right, well, next up, we have Town of Hempstead Supervisor Laura Gillan.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Oh, it's getting a little better. So I was thrilled last night to honor the Baldwin Girls Basketball Team and their coaches and Athletic Director and their parents for their excellence and the achievement in this great, great victory. It was a thrill to be with you, and I'm proud of you, not only in my capacity as a Town of Hempstead Supervisor, but just as a Baldwin girl myself. I don't know if I mentioned that to you last night. I grew up in Baldwin, and in fact, being in this gym reminds me that I started and finished my basketball career right here in this very gym. And in fact, it reminded me of, not too long ago, my mother, who still lives here in Baldwin, summoned all her adult children to the house and said, "Come, please get some of your stuff out of here." And so we're sorting through different things, and a howl of laughter comes from one of the rooms where my brothers are digging up things, and they found a basketball trophy and a citation to me for my excellence in basketball. And the reason this sent out howls of laughter is because, put it this way, Coach Catapano, you would never recruit me for basketball. But another interesting thing about this certificate was that it was for the league that I played on was the Baldwin Police Boys Club, PBC. So it said, "Police Boys Club," and they just took a pen and crossed out "boys" and wrote in "girls," and then they crossed out his achievements and wrote, or her achievements in it. So I think it shows the great strides that we've made, where our champions are ladies. I love it. Girl power, thank you for doing this for us. Thank you for bringing us this honor, and we're so proud of you and of what you've achieved. Thank you.
Okay, we are also pleased to have with us Councilwoman Guzbi.
Well, good evening. I did see, I did see your young ladies and the coaches at the town board meeting that we had on, was it last night? It seems, we got home about 11:30, I guess, is what time it was, so I forget which day it is. But I'm very, very proud of you. I'm very proud of Baldwin. Many times, you have won championships here for this wonderful school district, and it certainly speaks so well of all of you, especially the board members and the parents, who really take so much time and really support these young ladies. I know that these young ladies are going to be great in this community. They are the ones who are going to help all of us live a better life. You're going to be great. Public schools are wonderful. So I love public schools, and you have shown how much and how important it is to have them. So thank you, coaches. Thank you, young ladies. May God bless you throughout, and thank you so much, coaches, for all that you have put into this. And the parents, many of them not here, but I know one that I saw on television all the time with her head up. She was up with her special nails, and I said, "How could she play basketball with those nails?" But she was there, so thank you so much, and may God bless all of you, and congratulations again. Thanks. Oh, I think he's next, right?
Yes, and Councilman Deesposito.
Well, I'm batting cleanup, so I'll be very quick. I just want to really congratulate you. This is the second year in a row that I'm proud to come and celebrate a championship with you. And I think many times this evening, what was mentioned is a word called, you know, "a journey," and the journey that you've all taken. And I think that what you guys should remember is this journey has not only led to championships, it's not only led to you being great ballplayers, but it's led to great friendships, it's led you to being confident, it's led you to being great athletes, great individuals, and young women that will, without a doubt, lead our communities in the future. So I salute you. Congratulations, and God bless you all.
And we've got Karen Montalbano, President... Karen Montalbano, President of the Baldwin Civic Association.
I have to admit that I don't have anything with me tonight, because we have stuff planned, and hopefully, if it works out well, we'll be able to show you how proud we are of all that you have accomplished. that you have accomplished. It is wonderful to be in this community, we are so, so proud of you. Every time something would go up on Facebook, it was like, "Yes, there they go, yes." And, and, I can only go by Facebook, how many likes we were getting for it. You, you are showing us the best of what we have here in Baldwin and I want to say once again that we are so, so proud of you and we wish you, from the Civic Association, all the people here in Baldwin, the best as you move on, some of you will be moving on, some of you will be back to play next year and we're looking forward to watching your progress as you continue on. And yes, girl power, definitely.
All right, so we're going to do a quick photo op with the girls.
No, no, you guys, until, until Mrs. Hudson says you go, that, if you've learned anything this year, she tells you when to leave. All right, there you go. Just as, as, as you guys walk back, just a real quick, for the underclassmen, just a quick announcement, very important. For the underclassmen, and I know Coach Catapano and Coach Baldwin know this, word is that you guys can't carry this tradition on next year. So the challenge is out there, people say it can't be done, it's on you.
Okay, we have, this is on, okay, we've got some cake in the back and some cookies, we're going to take 10 minutes to celebrate the girls' accomplishments and then we will come back and finish our meeting. Thank you all for hanging around, those of you who did hang around will make it worth your while. We always do actually, every meeting. All right, so Dr. Kim, you said she's going to waive the comments and reports to the Board of Education, so that brings us to our first, oh actually no, so comments and reports from the Board of Education. Is there anyone who wants to share? You want to share? You want, okay, there's a, a couple of our members went to the National School Boards Association Convention, so, this past weekend, so they're going to give us kind of a quick update.
Yeah, I won't go into mass detail because, so, we have two things, we had the mental health symposium that was done on May 15th by NISBA, Mrs. Coles and I attended that. There were just three main points that kind of, they talked about a lot of the mental health issues coming from students or people who have mental health issues come from the traumatic, a traumatic situation that they've had in the past and so they were talking about the fact that, you know, our staff needs more training in that area because we tend to look at kids and say, you know, they're behaving badly but not asking the why. So that was one of the points that was brought up. Another point was talked about, uh, I'm going to just look at my notes. Oh, mental cell, they suggested that schools and entities that deal with kids do a mental service audit, like to see, you know, what are we doing in the schools, what's working, what's not working, what needs to change. And finally, they were talking about the need for, well, we have a new, I'm sorry, brain is fried, um, health, mental health curriculum starting in July. And so one of the things that Mrs. Coles and myself and Mrs., Mrs. Young, who was there on behalf of the district office, was wondering what guidance we were beginning from the state with respect to that and to no one's surprise, they still don't have the details worked out on that. So we're still looking and that's supposed to be implemented in July of this year. So still looking for information to that, to that end. So that was the one thing that I wanted to report on and I also wanted to quickly talk to us about, Ms. Coles and I did go to the national convention. It was a wonderful convention, I came back rejuvenated, there's a lot of good information that we received. Took place, this year's theme was be extraordinary, which I kind of think is great that, you know, we kind of fit right into that because we have a lot of extraordinary things going on in Baldwin. General, we had extraordinary general speakers, Terry Bradshaw, quarterback of the Pittsburgh Steelers, White House correspondent Ann Hempton, and former mayor of San Antonio and former Secretary of Housing Julian Castro. And all of them spoke at some point about the importance of public education in their lives and so they wouldn't be extraordinary without public education. We heard some amazing performances from three musical ensembles, Tom C. Clark, they did a jazz ensemble, Hazelwood East High School Women's Choir and there was another band that did, that stole drums from South Carolina and they, all, everyone was amazing. They had a variety of sessions and workshops. I will send you guys an email, I'm going to email you a more detailed report on the different things that I attended, I think Ms. Coles is going to do the same. I did attend something on the creative workspaces, which, you know, I figured, let's go and see what other people are doing and we're right on point with that. I also attended a seminar on coding, there was a discussion about, you know, trying to get kids coding as young as elementary schools. I also attended something on board governance, I mean, I, those were the highlights. I also attended a diversity inclusion workshop and hiring, how to hire and retain people of minor, people of color, teachers of color to represent this, you know, to be in front of our kids who, we have a diverse population. So I will put more detailed information in the email, hopefully by the end of the, by the weekend, there's some links and some things that, that I, would be easier to do through an email. I want to say, one of the things that I walked away from feeling was that when I moved to Baldwin, I was kind of shocked that we didn't have computer labs and those things. I mean, I was coming from Illinois, it's a very small school district and there were things that I was like, "We're a Long Island school district, why don't we have that?" And I almost kind of likened it to the trade embargo in Cuba where it kind of just seemed like time just kind of stood still. I'd like to say that we are really moving forward, we're on the cusp with our creative spaces, there was a lot of talk about the, the categories, others, we are, so it's just doesn't, I'm very proud to say and to know that we are like light years away ahead of, you know, where we were and, and we're right in the middle of, or right where we should be in terms of moving forward, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed, I want to jump to Mrs. Coles, you want to give us your report?
So, I believe that a national forum is a, is a great opportunity to gauge where we stand as a school district, not only through the sessions but meeting and speaking to people from all over the country. I'm really proud to say that we are ahead of most, honestly, in technology, college and career readiness and professional development. And of course, those are, you know, so very crucial. I, I did gather in listening to other people talk about the things that go on in their communities, that we, we do still have work that we need to continue to do in regards to our relationship with the community, community events, community involvement, you know, I, I saw and heard about things such as mobile book, you know, things taken, taken to kids, mobile book labs. Also, a great suggestion, something I think we could do is reaching out and trying to make sure that more of our senior citizens are invited to, get tickets to and actually are able to attend our concerts, our, you know, theatrical productions, musical productions. I, I think that's, you know, something that, that we should look at. And, and just overall, more improvement with community activities and community involvement that also speaks to members of the community that don't necessarily have kids in the school district. That's something that was talked about a lot as well. So a lot of good ideas and we will certainly be putting together some more official information and reports to be given a little later and I thank you for the opportunity. So I, thanks.
Thank you and thank you both for going, it's, you know, it was a long trip taking time out of your, out of your, your holiday break to do that, so we appreciate that and we look forward to the, the coming reports. Mrs. O'Hagan, do you have?
Sorry, just a couple of things, seems like so long ago, but I did see, I went to the middle school production of Annie, I think most of us attended that, it was absolutely wonderful. The talent and the number of students on the stage was just amazing. And I'm always a big fan of the choreography, I can't believe that, that you can get kids that have no idea how to dance to suddenly look like, look like they're ready for Broadway. So it was really terrific. I also attended the District Wind Symphony Concert, which as always was, was just terrific. While we're on the subject of entertainment, I got a Facebook message that a parent who used to be, who used to, whose children attended Baldwin was really tickled to be at a revival of Carousel in the city and one of the lead singers is a graduate, 1976 graduate woman named Margaret Collin. So we're everywhere and our kids start out in Baldwin and they, they continue on to, to Broadway. This morning, I, I chair the Long Island Education Coalition and we had a meeting this morning, our guest speaker was Roger Tillis, who is the region for Long Island and we had a very interesting free ranging conversation about a variety of things that are being proposed by the state, conversations that they're having about things that probably members of the public wouldn't pick up on necessarily, but things, there's a proposal, for example, to change the requirement for 180 school days to, to a specific number of minutes. And while that flexibility seemed like a very good idea when it was proposed, there is now a lot of concern that it, we don't have an exact definition of what is considered instructional time. So that, does instructional time include recess, does it include passing time and, and those sorts of things? So that now there's, there's some concern that this may not work exactly as, as was originally proposed. There were several other things that were being discussed, but in the interest of time, I will share this in writing with the rest of the board at another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Hagan, Mrs. Dress.
Nothing, nothing to report.
Okay. Not that she has not been active, we have all been, all over the district at various things. Yeah, I know we've all, I think all gone to see Annie.
Yep.
I know I saw Mrs. O'Hagan at the drama production at the high school, at the string, District String Festival, the Wind Symphony suites and suites, a lot of things going on and we will be, this is crunch time for us, so we are out and about at spring, winter, spring concerts, any number of budget roadshows at the, for the PTAs, you guys did one last night, I understand it went very well. So we will be out and about as we, as we usually are. Okay, so we are going to move on then to our, so this is our first comment period. What I want to propose, given the, kind of the late hour and we're going to, how we're going to move through the rest of the meeting, that we consolidate the comment periods into one this evening and that typically our first comment period is limited to agenda items only, the second comment period is open to all subject matter. I'm going to propose with the consent of the board that we just allow this comment period to be open to all topics. So we will open the floor in a second, if you have something to say, please step up to the mic when you do, if you can give us your name and address so that we can get back in touch with you if we need to. Please address your questions to me. We do not, we do not discuss matters relating to individual students or individual staff members during this period, it is not the appropriate forum. We ask that when you do address the questions to us, you do so respectfully of everyone, students, employees, administrators, board members, community members. And I think that covers everything. So with that, I will open the floor, oh, I'm sorry, and we're, I guess we'll keep the timed 30 minute period, everyone gets three minutes to speak. So with that, I will open the microphone. Okay.
Is this on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, Mr. Press, thank you very much for allowing comments. My name is Jeff Broadhurst, that's G-E-O-M, and Broadhurst, like the banner. I live at 751 Edward Street in the north of Baldwin, I don't call it North Baldwin, we're part of Baldwin.
I live up there too, so I hear you.
The, I, this is my second, I, first I apologize for not being a more regular attendee at board meetings, although I have been here in the past. I was down here earlier today to drop off a baggie that had been affixed or stuffed in my door handle with strips of paper that had comments on it regarding Baldwin Public Schools. The person who left it there did not knock on my door, but chose, I guess, to stuff it in there and then slunk off to go somewhere else. The material did not have any reliable sources cited, but it was disrepute of our schools. The, I didn't think it was respectful, I thought it was not honorable that the person did it in this fashion and it was unappreciated. If for, I, I value education, it's important for our students, for their future, it's important for the future of our country, for our democracy and important for our property values as homeowners, so on many different levels. If for whatever reason, I might have been disinclined to participate in a budget vote next month, this action has assured, ensured that both my wife and I will be there to vote in support of Baldwin schools. We are very impressed with, well, we've always been impressed with what's been done here and we've always been in support of that. I don't know if the person who left that, it is possible that the person might be in this room somewhere. I hope that this person would be dissuaded from continuing in this way and maybe might see some sort of revelation to a brighter future. Thank you for letting me come in.
Thank you, Mr. Broadhurst. I will say just, okay. Mr. Broadhurst, we are aware of the information that's being- Mr. Broadhurst, we are aware of the information that's being spread. We are aware of the person who is doing it. We, like you, hope that he will have some revelation, but we have seen this for a number of years now, and unfortunately, despite the fact that he generally does come to these meetings, we have not been able to convince him of the good things that are going on here in the district. So, yeah, we'll keep trying though. So, thank you.
Good evening. I wouldn't normally speak, just to be clear, I'm an educator. Sorry, I'm sorry. Jennifer Evans DeCrestio, I live at 2154 Chestnut Street. Some of you may recognize my face because I've come to some events in Baldwin. I don't have children in district, but this is revolted. I've gotten two now hand tied on my doorknob. Three other of my colleagues who happen to live in this district but work with me also have received it, and apparently the person is literally stopping in front of your door, walking up, and hand taking who he's giving it to. It's not given to everybody. And I'm just, I'm not surprised that the person is doing it this way, because I believe that I've been greeted by him as I go to vote every year. So, needless to say, as the gentleman has stated, my husband and I always support the schools, even though we don't have children who attend them. It is our most important valuable piece of this community, and I am so impressed as an educator with what you are able to accomplish as a school district. And I'm really saddened that this is still going on for the time since the tax cap has been put in place, and it really has only started since then. So, I thank you for all your hard work, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Colleen Gail Ye, 3500 Melbourne Avenue, Baldwin. My question is, and we got, actually, I'm moving away from that piece because I've been receiving it for like 10 years, so we're not going to talk about it. But my question is about Meadow, and to Dr. Kami and Mr. Press. There was a discussion in regard to the water sprinkler behind Meadow. Have you made a final decision on how we're going to proceed?
So, we are not doing sprinklers, but we do have plans that the architect is working on to redo the entire back of that. So, that's been designed, it has to go to State Ed, State Ed has to approve, and I believe it's one of the items in the referendum that's coming up for a vote in May.
Okay. I know some of the other parents have voiced concern regarding safety. I will imagine we've taken that into consideration, especially it's an elementary school.
Yes.
That it wouldn't be something that if the kids have any kind of injuries, you know, it will be a hard surface, hopefully it will be a soft surface.
Right. So, that's why we had the architects involved in that. We wanted to make sure that it was done right.
Okay.
And that's why it's taken a little bit longer than.
And when will we know exactly how the plan is going to happen, exactly what kind of material will be used in that area?
I think it has to be approved by State Ed, and then it comes back. Do you have an idea?
It has to be approved by the voters.
Right. So, once.
By the voters.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
We have to approve the proposition before State Ed approves it.
That's, we need approval.
Of the funding.
Right. That's one of the things that goes on the front row, that one has to be approved.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. So, it will be approved by the, is that going to be up to voting when we are voting?
So, there's a referendum on the vote in May, referendum three, and one of the items in there, we're not asking for money, the money's already there, we're asking for approval of the items that we're trying to fix, and that's one of the items in the end.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening all. Van White, 35 Big Wood Court. Moving ahead, how can the board change the seizure of having a community input question acting period before the agenda period?
You know, when.
Like we do today, today we're open.
Right, right. I mean, in general, so, I mean, I think when I first got on the board, we only had the one comment period at the end. We introduced the earlier comment period initially because people said that those meetings at that time would run fairly long, so people wanted to be able to get home. What we found was that wasn't really what was happening during that period, and in many school districts, the first comment period is generally limited to agenda items, and the purpose of that is so that we can get input from the community on agenda items before we vote on them. So, that was the, that's the current intent of that comment period. So, there is a comment period earlier.
Yeah.
But it's for the purpose of the, yeah, the agenda.
Because sometimes people care not behalf of the agenda, unfortunately, for the other reasons, but they have to wait hour, hour and a half before they can make their comments. And that's when they go, you know what, gotta go. So, you lose out, people haven't come out to the meeting because they have to wait hour and a half to ask a question, and sometimes when they ask a question, they don't get the right answer. So, they go, why didn't come out?
They always get the right answer. They may not like.
Not even answers, that is.
We always get the right answer, if we have it.
Because like I said, I post tonight, meeting, I just post, good job, empty chairs, you know, where are you? You know, people complain and talk about things happening, but it's not on Facebook, they can't come out, you know. I was almost surprised, I pulled up, wow, people out here, did I go? Okay. Well, that's something that you have to look into, try and give people a chance to speak earlier than later.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. White.
Cameron Vakil, 714 J-Way, K-A-M-R-A-N-V-A-K-I-L.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk about some of the safety policies that have been implemented in our school recently, mainly.
What school?
Oh, Baldwin High School, sorry. So, three rules have been put together for the students, and I think that one of them is rather superfluous, but I'd like to talk about that. The first rule is that students must show ID upon entry. The second rule is that students are only able to enter through the main entrance. All the other doors would be locked or supposedly alarmed. And the third rule is that students must wear ID when in the school. So, between the second and the third rule, there is, of course, overlap, and honestly, I'm not really a necklace kind of guy, so I ask if someone, I assume Dr. Kami, because your name is signed on this memo, would try to reconsider that third rule of students needing to wear the ID around their neck while in the school. By being in the school, I have, of course, proven that I am a student, so. I could go through the other ones, but I think I only have three minutes, and I don't want to keep you here all night, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Can I just? Yeah, if you don't mind. So, first of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight, and I also want to thank you for your questions and your comments, and really for having the courage to do that. I just want to share a couple of things because I think it's important for context. The idea of wearing the ID during the school day, you know that we have an open campus, and we have kids who leave during the day and they come back. So, once the students come in and show their ID in the morning, the kids are always moving back, you know, in and out of our building. There's been a lot of talk over the years about the idea of closing the campus and not having an open campus, and I think that, I actually think that's a bad idea. I think having an open campus is good for our kids. So, the procedures that were put in place really, it took a lot of time and effort and conversation, and we brought in some security experts to really talk to them about what are the things that we can do that are the least intrusive, but will better guarantee the safety of our students. And there are a couple of things that they said hands down are the things you absolutely must do. One is wear IDs, and the second is have a single point of entry. And so, I know that for some of our students, it feels like we're putting, we're putting upon them, and for that I apologize. But what outweighs that is the need to make sure that our students are secure. And one of the, one of the things that we're trying to keep intact is the idea of an open campus. I hope we'll always be able to have that. I couldn't guarantee that. But I think there's some real advantages for our kids to be able to go out and move around and breathe fresh air during the day, not the least of which is that our cafeterias won't house as many students as have lunch at any given time. I'm happy to reconsider wearing it around your neck as opposed to, you know, having it on a clip. I can tell you that I was in the high school this morning, and I was really impressed by the number of students who complied and didn't make a stink about it. There were still students that were not wearing their IDs, and some students who were still wearing earbuds, you know, either wrapped around their neck or around their ear, and, you know, some of the reasons for some of the rules are because we asked students to do certain things, and all we did was have trouble getting them to comply. So, you know, I'm happy to think more about whether or not it has to be as a necklace, but I don't see us getting away from always having to display the ID cards. The idea going forward is that the ID card will be used for scanning in at the lunch, you know, at the lunch counter. You'll be able to load it with money and not have to pay with cash. When you go to the library, you'll scan in using your ID card. We're moving toward attendance with ID cards, so as the years go on, there's going to be more and more reasons to actually have the ID cards ready and available at all times. So, I just hope that context helps you understand the reasons why we made the decisions that we made.
So, Cam, can I ask a quick question? In terms of the ID, what happens if the child does not have an ID to enter the building? Do they show some, a different type of, what happens is really my question.
My understanding at the high school is that they're going to either the attendance office, I think the attendance office, they're looking up whether or not they're a student, and if they need a replacement ID, you know, there's going to be a point at which we're not going to keep replacing an ID.
Right.
But my understanding for some students who didn't display it is they got lunch detention.
Okay. Thank you.
Just the other part of that, that I wanted to say, separate and apart from all the work that Dr. Kami and the administration did here, you know, I was at a presentation today on school safety, and the two points that the individual who was speaking made, points to focus on were entry points, so having a single point of entry into a building, and having students and staff wear IDs at all time. So, those are the two things that they did say to focus on. So, it seems like that's a common theme in terms of when we're talking about safety. So, okay.
Well, I was here already, so I said in my name, while you said that, I felt I needed to share this because I work in a high-risk group, I'm a nurse practitioner, and one of the things you mentioned that immediately actually came up to me, and I thought about it because I remember working at Mount Sinai, one of the reasons they removed the ID around the neck, it becomes a safety issue if you have, I mean, I'm not saying none of our students are violent, but if you have another student pulling another student, that can become a safety issue.
So, the ones, the ones that we bought, they snap off.
Very nice. All right. I mean, as we were talking about it, I thought about it immediately, I'm like, well, that's one of the reasons we got rid of it, and we started wearing the clip was because it was a safety issue. Good to know.
Yeah. And I've got two kids at the high school, and they've raised, kind of, both of those, oh, they're not, you know, their kids, they're, oh, they're, I'm like, I offered to trade with them, actually, because I liked it, but then they also showed me that it did kind of pop off in the back.
Yeah.
It's made to separate. Okay.
Melissa Y, 1589, Watts, Westfield. I was not planning on telling you anything, but we had our PTSA meeting, which was all attended. Principal Fagola handled a lot of questions that evening. We were definitely moving in the right direction, making good changes, the IDs, the things. There were a couple of things that were brought up, just moving forward, how those are handled, one being, first period, a young man who had already graduated walked in with our students, and there was a proposal. It's going to happen, it's not, that's not the issue, but moving forward, how, how do we combat that fear?
So, we, we, our plan, and I know I've mentioned this before, I don't know if you were here when it was mentioned, I started working on this in September, right, way before any of the events of this year happened. We sped some things up because of some of the recent events. What we implemented Monday was really just step one. We are looking at multi-layers of things that we can do. We also know that, once we implemented these procedures, that we weren't going to be perfect.
No.
And so, we needed to figure out what are the things that didn't work. So, for example, at the very least, starting in September, we'll have the stickers that have the year on it, so that if you graduate and you still have your ID, it's not going to be good enough because you're not going to have the sticker. The idea when we're, when all is said and done, is that this ID does everything for you. So, we're hoping that students will tap in on the way into the high school. If you're a graduate, it's going to deactivate, you're not going to be able to use that. We're hoping, with our Smart Schools bond, what's planned is that all of our doors of our classrooms are going to be wired, and so you're going to tap into class, and having to take attendance will be eliminated because you'll just tap into class. Our biggest challenge is knowing where our kids are during lunch, and so one of the things that we're in the process of doing is getting our student cellphone numbers. We've not really had people object to that, and I'm glad about that. When our kids go off to college, if, there's notification systems colleges use, and they text the kids to say, so, you know, we need to have a way that if we're doing a lockdown or a lockout, and we have kids on Grand Avenue at lunch, we need to be able to text those kids to say, go home, go to the movie theater, whatever that is, because there's a lockdown. So, that's another layer of this, but there's a whole.
And it's going to get more, and that, to be honest, and just so you know, the majority of the parents do support everything they're doing, so when things come aboard, like, we, you know, we had heard it to happen, both my co-president and I didn't have a kid who visually was there, so we didn't want to say anything, but Principal Fagola attacked it right at the beginning of it, saying, okay, this did happen, and it's something that, yes, we need to work on. The only other thing that was mentioned was about when parents need to come if there's an emergency where you need to drop something off. You can drop something off, you'll be able to get in, not into the building, into the thing. And just from a security standpoint and watching things that have happened, I don't know if that's necessarily a good thing either. And I'm active in the school, and I'm saying that if, you know, if I want to come drop something off to my kid, it either needs to wait, like, if somebody can get into that circle at any point of the day, they're a risk, if they want to be. If they know they can come and say, oh, my kid's just going to run out, if that's all they have to tell the person at the front, my kid's going to come and run out to give you, to get something from me, just, you know, because I know we talked even last meeting, there was something about, you know, whether people were going to be able to walk through high school drive, you know, the general public, and not that you want to go that way, but just, these were things that came up as the gentleman was speaking, that, you know, people started thinking about last night, and the more they think, you know, the more things.
So, we've thought of all those things. I'm sure there's a whole bunch of things we haven't thought of. One of the things that is on the referendum, Proposition Three, is a guardhouse on, at the gate at Grand Avenue. We've talked about doing something on the Brookside Avenue. I will say that one of the things that we did not want to do is we didn't want to do all these things all at once, so people felt like they went from this open neighborhood-y kind of campus to this, like, lockdown kind of an environment. But there are phases of this that we've really looked at. The guard that we have at Grand Avenue now, I think is doing a good job. He actually stops the cars, gets out of his car, and is checking IDs. I had one parent from an elementary school today who was upset they couldn't bring a file that their child left at home. I get it, you know, honestly, and hopefully my kids will never watch that video, I have at least one kid that would have left that file at home.
I have at least one kid that would have left that file at home and I would have been the parent that had to show up with, you know. But there's a balance between the security and what people are used to as the convenience. If your child leaves their violin at home, they have to remember their violin. If they forget their lunch at home, they have to remember their lunch. And that's not just about security. That's about teaching them and changing simple habits. Uh, oh, my time's up.
They told you your time was up.
I'm sorry, Dr. Cami.
So, you know, so there's, there's a balance, but, you know, we have this very long list of things that we believe, um, we need to do. Um, and, and we're checking them off, um, one at a time.
Thank you, Mrs. Watts. Seeing no one else coming to the mic, we are going to move forward with our agenda. The Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report dated April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, as amended as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Uh, this contains information pertaining to individual staff members. We do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the Recommendations for Services of, of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-SCSE five oh four Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for Services in December two thousand seventeen, and January, February and March two thousand eighteen, as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Uh, as this contains information pertaining to individual students, we do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Jareska. Second by Mrs. Reed. Uh, again, this contains information pertaining to individual students, so we do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, as Board President, I'm calling for consideration of the business items in tonight's agenda as consent items. This includes business items one through nine, which is all of the business items. Uh, we're doing that, this is this usual, we've got a number of obsolete items. Our sedcar contracts are out of district. Uh, I'm sorry, this is helping welfare services contracts and general contract services, uh, including budget transfers. So that's included in these items. Are there any items members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote?
No.
Okay. So then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, including business items one through nine. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Jareska. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? No, the motion carries. So now I need a motion to approve items one through nine.
Sell.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reed. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Board of Education approves the Updated Use of Facilities Report for July two thousand seventeen through June two thousand eighteen, as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the Use of Fields Spring two thousand eighteen Report as detailed in the Thursday mailing.
Sell.
Moved by Mrs. Jareska. Second by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? Okay.
Uh, so, I don't, I guess this would maybe be the question for Russ, but I'm just curious, when you were making up this schedule for use of fields, was everybody for the most part accommodated? Or was there clamoring and difficulty with same day, same time?
There were meetings every year and all groups come together. There's one meeting and you decide together and work out.
So is that the same meeting that is done for the indoor use of facilities? They're two separate meetings? Okay.
Because these are all through spring and summer, so...
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But you, but you have meetings for the fall?
For outside meetings because we have all the groups that are not for fall. That's why we use our field. So, yeah, we have all these committees, each volleyball, we try to use the field every week. We make sure that everyone has equal time, let's deal with that. Uh, and that means it's a bit of a structure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the Reorganization Meeting to be held on Thursday, July fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Sell.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? Just for the benefit of the public, uh, generally our meetings are on the second Wednesday of every month. Our regular board meetings. Um, the Reorganization Meeting, which happens in July, um, by law, has to happen sooner than that. So, um, and this time, the day that worked for everyone was July fifth. So our meeting in July will be on Thursday and not Wednesday. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, all right. And then the Board of Education approves, the Board of Education meeting dates for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year is detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, before I read through the motion, so we need to designate someone as chairperson for the budget vote and board election on May fifteenth. Is anyone? Mrs. Kools. You can, you can share.
You can. I'll take it out.
You want to do one in the morning, one in the evening? We have to do one person as the chairperson, I think.
Oh, I don't want to do it.
So we're down to four and I can't do it, so that's three.
Exactly.
And Mrs. O'Hagan is not, it looks like she's willing to fight it out for this, so... All right, so we're okay, then, Mrs. Kools. All right, so then the Board of Education appoints Sue Kools as the Chairperson for the May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen Budget Vote and Board Election. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
So you realize that means you have to be there at seven in the morning? Okay.
Well, I, I didn't realize exactly what time, but that's fine.
Oh, okay. We probably should have discussed that before.
And I have you as a host also.
You have to be there when they, yeah.
Bring everybody coffee.
Right, coffee. Board President gets doughnuts. Yeah?
Okay.
All right. We try. Uh, Board of Education approves the List of Registarians, Assistant Clerks and Inspectors for the Budget Vote and Board Election to be held on Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the Renewal of the Contract with Professional Innovative Programs to Provide a Computerized Voting System and Technology Support for the May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen Budget Vote and Board Election, as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Jareska. Second by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education authorizes the Baldwin Parents in Partnership for School Age Child Care, Inc. to continue on two thousand eighteen nineteen to use district facilities as identified by the district in consultation with the service providers for the purpose of conducting a before and after-school childcare program and the continuation of the swim program. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there questions or comments?
Remind me again, that's their, like, DVA? Is that what it is?
That's part of their corporate name.
Yeah, it's the JCC.
Oh, that's just local.
Yeah. So this is the before and after-school program that is run by the JCC here in the district? All right, any other questions? All those, oh...
Never mind, go ahead. That's fine.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the Letter of Intent and Textbook Central Agreement from Tel Logic, Inc., Textbook Central, for Participation in the Non-Public School Textbook Program for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we do, we have other before policies. We do, let's do, let's do policies first. Um, Board of Education has a first reading of Policy twenty-two ten, Board Organizational Meeting, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So we don't need a motion for that because that's first reading. Does anyone have any questions on that that they would like to address? Okay. And then the Board of Education adopts Policy fifty-four hundred, Student Dress Code, as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. Jareska. Are there any questions or comments on this policy? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, does anyone have anything under other?
Are you going to announce the foundation program when you do your dates? If not, then I'll just...
It is, it is on here.
Okay.
Yeah. I didn't bring my, do you have the flyer?
I didn't bring the flyer, no.
You have that?
Yeah, it's in my bag. Oh, I have it right here.
Oh, you do?
Oh, you do?
Okay, because I'll read some of the details there. Um, does anyone else have anything under other? Do you want to bring up?
Nope.
Okay. Um, all right, so then I'm going to read important dates. With Miss Montalban up here, I will say that the Baldwin Civic Association has a meeting this Thursday at seven thirty?
No, actually.
No?
It's at seven.
Seven. Okay. Okay, seven o'clock Thursday at the high school for the Baldwin Civic Association. The Baldwin Foundation for Education is having their spring celebration this Saturday, April fourteenth, at the high school, uh, at two PM. It is a salute to veterans. So they invite the public to join, uh, to join them as they honor our veterans. Um, and recognizing those who served, uh, well, recognizing those who served. There will be entertainment and light refreshments. I know there are going to be some performances by some of the, um, high school groups. I think the Step Team is performing, one of the bands at the high school as well. So, two PM, uh, on Saturday. For that. Uh, let's see. So I, there's a lot of stuff on here. I just choose, um, what to read that I think would be interesting to have those assembled here. Uh, there will be, um, a PTA-sponsored Candidates Forum for the candidates running for Board of Ed and, um, Library Board that will be held Wednesday, April twenty-fifth, right here at eight PM. I'm sorry. I know, it is, it is...
I know, but, but they said it's, they would like us to get there between two thirty and two forty-five, but it is definitely two PM.
But it was three and get there early so to help set up. So it doesn't make any...
They changed it to two PM. I advise them what the calendar said.
And they want you to be there later?
They want us to be there between two thirty.
Yeah, but in other words, they want us to come after it begins, when it's half over?
Because there's a beginning part where you're able to walk around and meet. That's why it's changed. The whole venue has changed. It's more of a, see what tables are there and...
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. So that the entertainment portion probably begins at three, but the earlier portion is for people to mingle.
Yeah, mingle between two and two thirty, but it'll start closer to two forty-five.
So this is the BFE event, whereas there was some confusion. I think the calendar has it starting at three. So it sounds like the two to three PM is for kind of mingling and...
I was confused because on the calendar, it was originally...
Right.
Yeah, they changed it.
For a lot of people, it was...
Okay. Um, okay, so Candidates Forum, um, Wednesday, April twenty-fifth. Uh, we can, I can speak to, we have two positions open on the board. Um, the positions are Mrs. O'Hagan and Mrs. Jareska. Um, I believe they are both running for reelection. We won't know until the official val, um, documentation is handed in on Monday. Is it Monday or Tuesday? Tuesday by five PM.
Monday.
Monday, it is Monday.
Yes, Monday.
Okay, correct. Monday by five PM. Um, multiple spring concerts coming up. Uh, the, so the, now the annual budget vote and vote for board, uh, members and library budget is... No, sorry, I got ahead of myself. Annual District Meeting and Budget Hearing is Wednesday, May second, at eight PM here at the district office. That will be our final presentation of the budget. Um, you can also come in here at the library budget presented, uh, on that date as well, May second, eight PM, right here. Um, the Baldwin Educational Assembly General Meeting is Monday, May seventh, at eight PM at the high school. And our next meeting, our next Board of Ed meeting, is, um, Wednesday, May tenth, at seven PM. It's an earlier start time at the high school. At that meeting, that is our annual meeting where we, uh, recognize our academic, athletic and, um, musical honors, um, students. Okay, right. Right. Um, yeah, what I forgot, and, and my kids would shoot me for this. The Baldwin Win Symphony will be performing at Ojica Castle, uh, this coming Monday, um, the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think it's, oh, God, I can't believe I know that. I think it starts at seven. Um, it is free. It is open to the public. Um, this is a, a, sort of replacement concert of sorts. They had prepared to perform at the New York State Band Directors Association Convention, uh, up in Syracuse, but we had a bad winter storm. They were not able to travel. And through some connections that people have, we were able to, we, the district was able to arrange to have them perform the material that they worked so hard, uh, to prepare for their trip up to the Nispita Convention. They will be performing it at Ojica Castle on Monday. So, um, there's stuff on social media, um, more information there, but we'll see you all there.
Seven PM.
Yeah, seven PM. Um, and there's dessert afterwards. And it's free. Did I mention that? And then there will be a parade honoring the girls' basketball team on April twenty-eighth. Um, I don't know, do we have specific?
Not yet.
We don't have details on that, so, um, but I'm sure it'll pop up around social media and, um, we'll share information from the district. What's that? Yeah, I'm sure it'll be, yeah, on, on all the usual channels, um, the website and social media, district social media. And that is all I have. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Jareska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming and have a good night.